And welcome to the Ramai Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting of Monday, January 11, 2019. Hold on, roll please.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
Mr. Hidman.
Here.
All members present?
You're going to number two.
Yes, real quick. What's that? All right, this is for the, uh, this is for everybody that has a cellphone, or a laptop, or any type of device. If you can log in to www.kaahot.it, and then type in that PIN number, six one six seven five six.
Mine won't let me go.
No? You got one?
Can I just stand?
Just turn your, uh, internet off.
Turn it off?
Yeah. I know there's more cellphones than that. All right, yeah, let's go ahead and start it. All right, so I just have four quick questions for everybody. And question number one, do you make pay more property taxes than the surrounding districts? And on your screen, you'll have a color. Red says we pay less than most districts, blue says we pay more than most districts, and gold or yellow says we pay the same as other districts. So take a guess which one you think is the correct answer.
No, gold, well.
You guys turn that over. All right, we got 20 seconds left. All right, so we had 70% of everybody that played there said we pay less than most districts, and 30% said we pay, uh, the same. So, we took a poll here, we ran an average house value, and, uh, I compared it to, and I'll go through the list here, Lorraine, and I'll go with in order. So, the ones that pay the highest property taxes to the lowest property taxes. Lorraine is the highest, followed by Perkins, Sandusky, Western Reserve, Midview, Amherst, Margarita, Norwalk, Edison, Firelands, Huron, and Vermillion. So at all those districts, Vermillion actually pays the least amount of property taxes compared to everybody else. Lorraine's the highest. So poll number two here is, when is our renewal levy? Spring of 2020, fall of 2020, spring of 2021, or never? All right, so everybody went quick. We got 20% saying in the spring, 20% in the fall, 10% saying never, and 50% in 2021. Uh, it's a little bit of a trick question. Our renewal levy was last passed March 15th of 2016, and it passed with 65% of the vote. Um, so we'll have ballot language in either November of 2020, or in the spring of 2021. Most likely look for it, though, in November of 2020. Next question, renewal levy increases my property taxes. Red is true, blue is false, and gold is maybe. False, 90%, 10% said maybe, so that's correct. Um, effectively, like, House Bill 920 freezes all voted real estate mileage until the dollar amount collected the first year of the levy passed. So as property values rise, House Bill 920 reduces your effective mileage rate to continue collecting the same it did the year it was passed. Some may pay more in property taxes, some homes may pay a little bit less, but the school collects the exact same amount. And then the last question here, how much revenue does our renewal levy generate? Is it less than 10% of our budget? Fifteen to ten, or 10 to 15%? 15 to 20, more than 20% of our operating budget? So we mixed bags. So we got 33% between 10 and 15, 44 between 15 and 20, and, uh, 22% more than 20% the answer. Um, actually, it's the gold one right there. It's, uh, the renewal is for $4.2 million, which is 17.9% of our operating budget. Thanks for taking part, and get on to the more important things here.
Okay, now on to Citizens of the Month. Okay, first of all, congratulations on being named Citizens of the Month, and as you come forward, state your name, what grade you're in, your teacher's name, and what you want to be when you grow up. And again, if you don't know, that's okay, and if you need help with this question, okay?
My name is, my name is Liam, and...
What grade?
I know you're in second, I know you're in second grade.
What's your teacher?
Ms. Garcia.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A Canadian project.
All right, so then when you're done, go ahead and stand at the end of the line, okay?
My name's Van, and...
What grade?
Kindergarten.
Your teacher's name?
Ms. Van.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Uh, a police officer.
Very good.
My name is Quentin.
What grade?
Kindergarten.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Wagner.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Artist.
Very nice.
Hello, my name is Tyler. I am in second grade. My teacher is Ms. Becker, and I want to be an artist when I grow up.
Very nice, thank you.
My name's Isaac.
What grade is your teacher?
I'm in fourth grade.
Teacher's name?
My teacher's name is Ms. Becker.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a, uh, a policeman in the Navy.
My name is Darren.
What grade are you in here?
First grade.
Teacher's name?
Ms. Looks.
And what do you want to be when you grow up, Dan?
Electrician.
Very nice.
My name is Maggie. I'm, my name is Maggie, I'm in third grade, my teacher is Mrs. Parker, and I want to be a teacher.
My name is Carolyn, and I, uh, my name is, my teacher...
What, yeah, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten, and my teacher's name is, uh, Mrs. Dale.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A police officer.
Very nice.
My name is Nolan.
What grade are you in, Nolan?
First grade.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Brink and Ms. Molly.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A vet.
Thank you, Nolan.
My name is Brody. I'm in second grade, my teacher's Ms. Gonzalez, and I would like to be an entomologist when I grow up.
Very nice. Does everybody know what that is?
No.
Do you want to tell them, Brody? What is that?
Um, the, the guy who studies, like, bugs.
Bugs, that's right. Very good, very good. All right, that's everybody, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, now you guys, if everyone will please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance, and then, at the end, we'll, uh, the pledge, we will have a moment of silence to honor our veterans. Are you ready? Let's see, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We started.
United States of America. For justice stands, one nation, under God, in this world, no sin, justice for all.
One to six, let's decide your choice.
Um, yeah, we're gonna be excited. Um, a whole lot going on in that either, but I did find a couple of things that I thought were interesting, just kidding, how much we talked about reading lately, and the importance of that basic fundamental reading skill. Um, there were two bills that were being heard by the Senate Education Committee, one of them is Senate Bill 102. Um, it's to establish a screening program for dyslexia in public schools and provide intervention services. This would be if your districts would be required to screen all students at least once prior to entering first grade, or upon entering the district if they had not been screened previously. Schools would then be required to provide intervention to the at-risk students and those with dyslexia, and provide reassessments to see if interventions were effective. This is being built upon, I should have wrote on the House Bill 96 or something, where they had done a little pilot study at the handful of schools before that implemented this, and they found that the, the at-risk students just thrived really significantly by implementing something like this. So, that's kind of where that's coming from. And then the other one was Senate Bill 200, which is also about, um, the dyslexia, which would require new public school teachers to complete a dyslexic screening and intervention professional development course, and would also require each school district to establish a structured literacy certification process for teachers, providing instruction in grades K through five. Um, the end goal of that, which would be kind of rolled out phases, would be to have at least one certified teacher for 100 K through five students by the end of the year of 2024, 25, by the end of that school year.
That's it. Very good. Thank you. Sure. One to seven, public participation. Good. Do you have anyone? Nothing? All right. Moving right along, on to reports. Uh, I'll start with the superintendent's report.
Do we want to make a motion to amend the agenda to enter into executive session pursuant to one, one, one two, one, one two, two, and add at the end of the meeting? And this is for, uh, considered appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion of motion, compensation of a public employee or official, or an investigation of charges or a classified public employee, official, and this is, this is the...
So where are we putting that then?
Um, it'll be at the end.
Twenty seven, okay.
Before 13.
Right.
We'll just do that motion now. Go ahead, this will be a third one. So, top, twenty four.
Oh, I get you.
Twenty one. Yeah.
Okay, so a motion to add an executive session is item number 12 on the agenda. All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. Hidman.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
All right, now, moving on to reports. Superintendent's report, Mr. Hidman.
All right, I'm gonna alter this just a little bit. Shelley's started off, after the pledge, with a moment of silence, and just want to say a little bit about veterans. The day, at the elementary school today, they did a nice program, the PTO, over there brought in some veterans to be speakers, uh, to, to the classes, and from everything in my walk around today, the kids and teachers really enjoyed that, and made a big impact on kids, so I heard that. It was wonderful. As usual, they also did a program at the middle school, and they opened up the day by recognizing veterans, and had them stand up and be recognized for the contributions, and the students were there, and I heard that that was a really good program. I didn't make it for that, unfortunately, because we had some things here at the high school, but tomorrow, traditionally, we have our peer leadership group that will go over and serve lunch to the veterans. And that's been a tradition that Kristi Edmondson and our peer leadership team usually does for the veterans, so, as we know, we wouldn't be sitting in these chairs tonight if it hadn't been for our veterans, and that's just a wonderful event, and so, we want to make sure that we're paying our respects to veterans and for all that they did, so just want to make sure that we're recognizing that as a board and as a school district.
Make sure to watch that.
That's at Open Door every year, that's where Open Door opens their doors to the veterans and has our group come over and bring the meals over there, and so they have a pretty nice lunch for that group, for the veteran group. So that's, uh, first. Um, the next item that I have, which is the item that I had written here, was supervision athletic events. I just want to bring this up tonight and start to talk about it, and I'm not expecting, I'm not recommending anything at this point, or asking you to make any kind of decisions, but, we, other schools have done this, and it's something that we just maybe need to talk about and discuss a little bit, and that's, uh, for the lower-grade students in some stadiums for football games, they're asking that supervision of those students become mandatory. Parents need to take the kids up till sixth grade in the stands with them, basically, and not just drop them off and let them to have free run of the stadium. Honestly, uh, we've talked about this as a board through the years that I've been here as superintendent, and we've always made the decision, let, let's make sure that the kids have fun, and this should be an enjoyable event, but, from my observation, I think that this is getting progressively more difficult for everybody, and we've been having a few incidences almost every game, every football game, and it, it's getting to the point where it seems like the kids are just getting a little bit out of hand, and then they're ruining the experience for other people that are there to enjoy the game. And some of the time has to be taken by staff, by parents, by spectators that are, unfortunately, at the outskirts of these incidents that are taking place. Last game, we had a fight, actually, that took place that disrupted some of the people that were there, and just caused chaos, and it was involving kids that were actually sixth grade. So, just something to think about and talk about, if we are gonna do this, I think we need to start thinking about and planning it early enough, and giving parents enough time to know that they can't just any longer drop their students off and just purchase a ticket to the game and let their kid come to the game, and then they pick them up after the game. And I think that that's what's happening in a lot of cases. They're just dropping them off and expecting that they're gonna behave, and there's no supervision. And I know that for a fact that this is being done in, in a few stadiums around us, and it seems like it's becoming the trend because of the same reason. So it's something for us as a board and as a district to think about. We don't have to just decide tonight that that's what we're going to do, but, we just want to be sure that people are there to enjoy the game, and that's their first and foremost reason to be there, is to watch the game, not just to run around everywhere. And, um, just my thoughts on it, and my observations, and talking to our administrative team about the issues, and it's just becoming more and more of a concern.
We have an issue with the kids putting football around down in the Montrose area.
Yeah, and that's another thing, we, we hire auxiliary police, we usually have, I believe, five on at a game, and the police do a decent job of that, but, before you know it, the kids are right back at it again, so they tell them, and then they go back to them. Believe it or not, they're not even listening to the police officers when they're telling them to do something. So if they're with their parents, they won't have an option, if, if that's what we might think about doing. And, right now, too, we've, we've added a spirit booth in the area that the kids usually play football, and that's disruptive to them selling over there, because people are walking over there in that spirit booth, kids are throwing a ball around, inadvertently, the ball gets thrown too far, kids are running, they're not paying attention, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen for someone that might be in the area of that spirit booth and get hurt because kids are playing.
Can we also have the, um, the brick area with, uh...
We took it down for that reason, honestly. Those bricks, those brick, there was a V by the anchor, and every year, our maintenance people have had to put that back together, and it's not just every year, it's after every game. I just finally said, hey, guys, let's just take this down, because it, that's just been a congregating place for kids, and it's not necessarily because they're, they're not with parents, they're walking all over the bricks, they're knocking them down. So we just took it down, or were planting seagrass around the anchor, and that's just more appropriate, because irregardless of whether or not the kids were there, most likely people sit on that, they, they don't do it on purpose, but, that really, it was hard to maintain. It was just one of those items that probably were better off not to have. It looked nice when it was first put up, but, it, it's just something that was too hard to maintain, so we, we've taken that down. One of the things that James did recently, too, was he got pricing to, on the home side, fence in under the bleachers, and we're still getting more quotes, so I'll come back to you with those quotes. One of the things that we talked about, it was blocking with a piece of plywood the underside of the bleachers, because what we do is we have kids that go behind those bleachers, and they sit, and they want to look up underneath the stands, and it, it's just, it's not, it is lit back there, but not well-lit as we'd like it to be, and it becomes a, a, a problem for us of, of supervising kids once again. So we're thinking about, at the very minimum, that these play plywood there so they can't sit way up underneath the stands, but we're also thinking to run the fence back a little bit and just fence that whole area off, and it could be used then partially during the wintertime for things that would be stored outside as storage that might be worthwhile for us if we can buy the fencing at a decent price and not pay a whole lot to get that fenced in, and that might solve a problem. And it wouldn't look bad, we'd make sure that it was done like in a black, not just chain link, but a little bit nicer fencing, and...
So like, close off walking access?
There'd still be walking access along the back where it's well-lit, but it would be just a path then to get from one end to the other.
So just the up-close part of it?
That's right.
So you'd still be able to use the two exits out of the bleachers that are in the middle?
That's right, yes.
Okay.
And then maybe like 10, 10 foot up, up to that section, and then there'd still be an exit to go back out of, but it just wouldn't be a congregating place as it is now for, for kids.
Could this be just football?
Well, it's, it's, you mean for...
So this evening with your parents?
Oh.
And, you know, sixth and, you know, would be basketball or just football or volleyball or...
Well, we don't really have that problem for basketball, because basketball is more of a controlled inside place, and we don't really have kids that we see that are just dropped off running around.
That's true.
It's, it seems to be more controlled, but I would say that, and soccer is a little bit different, because there are more just people there that are to see the games, and it's just a different atmosphere, but if, it might be a band concert or something similar to that, we would say the same thing, possibly, but, it's just something to think about tonight, and maybe I'll bring it up in another month or two as a, as a discussion item, and we can talk about it and see what your thoughts are, but I just did want to include it as, as a beginning, to plant a thought in your mind about what to do with the teacher.
Could we maybe ask, um, other districts around, if, sort of, see what their rules are, or see what they have?
Sure, yeah, I know for sure Avon, Avon, Avon Lake, they, they went to that same policy.
Avon, you have to be accompanied by an adult to get it, right?
For sixth grade and under, is that how they did it there?
Yes. So it's just something to think about. Okay, that's all I have for that item. The next item I have on here is to recommend a resolution to approve the agreement for consultation and support services between Vermillion and the School District and Positive Education PEP at a cost of $57,750 for 70 days, commencing November of 2019 and ending in June of 2020.
I'll move.
One second.
So let me tell you a little bit about this, and what this is for. We're, we're working in our school district to have a continuum of service for students that are having social and emotional learning issues, and this seems like an expensive program, but I can tell you that our district has done a pretty good job of not sending kids to a self-contained PEP unit. What this is, is a program that they come to us and work with us and give us a training. It's a teacher management program, basically, that will help our teachers to work with some students that are having some higher needs that are usually emotionally, emotional learning-based type deficiencies, and, uh, so this is part of that program. This is paid through, uh, through our, basically, our free and reduced lunch program. It, it's part of the health and wellness, student wellness, not health and wellness, student wellness program, and we received this year, based on our free and reduced count, actually, this is a year behind, so the funds that we received are $240,000. Next year, we're already slated to make a, a significant amount more money, because, as you know, our free and reduced lunch count has been increasing, and, uh, so that's where the money is coming from, to pay for these, and one of the requirements is that you have to then, I'll get to that on the next item, but, uh, and I'll say a little bit more about that in the next item, but, that's where the money is coming from, for this program, and I think that this is a part of our whole wraparound idea here, where we're providing services for students that are in need, and helping our teachers to get the, the training and the help that's needed to work with the students, so I just wanted to give a pretty...
This, this says it provides consultation and support, does it, is it in the form of a person in the school buildings, or...
Yes, so they actually have people from PEP come to us, it's a PEP assist, so they're bringing the people to us. PEP also does have a, a self, a self-contained program in itself, where you would send kids from our district out to that program, and they're no longer with us then, they're still considered our student, but you enroll them in that program, and that's significantly more expensive. One student runs, can run in the $50,000 range just for one student to be there, so this assistance is actually gonna provide services for, um, for the district for that number of days, and the teachers, and the, and the kids. Any questions about that, or...
Can we call the roll, please?
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. Hidman.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Question?
All right, so the third item on my report is to recommend a resolution to approve the agreement between Ohio Guidestone and Vermillion Local School District for school-based behavioral health consultation and a prevention program at a rate of $114... behavioral health consultation and a prevention program at a rate of $114.36 per hour for purchased services, if it's in attachment B.
I'll move. Second?
Okay, so some more information about this. Same fund that this is coming out of, it's paid, it's coming from that free and reduced wellness program. And it's part of the $240,000 that the district received. And this is part of what the community asked for us back in March of 2018, when we were looking at how to work with families and the whole child, and the social and emotional learning aspect of a child. And so this is part of a three-pronged program, really, that is total wraparound aspect and continuing of services. Guidestone is this type of a program that will provide up to 20 sessions for 10 students. And it's a consultation service, basically, and a guidance service beyond what our counselors are offering. Our counselors can do a whole lot, but there's more things that can be done for students and families that are having issues. So this really is for Erie County students only. The students that are in Loraine County get paid through the Loraine Mental Health Board, actually. So this is a different funding source that we get the money for this. And you have to partner with an outside agency. This Guidestone is considered a partnership with an outside agency that you need to do to be eligible to spend the funds properly, that we get audited for. And it's just part of what we're doing. I could say this about the things that we're doing. We're not perfect by any means of the things that we're doing in our school district, but I think that we have a lot to be proud of. When our teachers and our families go out, and our community goes out, and they talk about what's happening with what we're doing with our programming to provide students with help, we're being told by outside people outside of our school district that you need to come over and watch what Vermillion is doing right now in this regard. Honestly, we don't feel that way sometimes, because there's still things that in the process aren't working, and we're still not helping students enough in our estimation. And it's not that our teachers don't want to, or they don't care, or they're not trying. There's a lot of caring, there's a lot of empathy, there's a lot of work going on. But there's still things that, irregardless of the fact that we have all these great things like this in place, and we put it all together, and we packaged it, and we made it a type of a wraparound service, there's still more work to be done. And there's more kids that are coming to us with greater needs, quite honestly. And it's a challenge. But this program is what, is a piece of that puzzle that we're working to put together, and we're proud of what's happening here and what we're doing.
Just to piggyback off that, too, the funding that Mr. Peppin's speaking up here is from House 166, the Governor lines under law effective October 17th of this year. All of this money that we're receiving, all school districts in Ohio are receiving, is not the general fund dollars. It's a 400 fund from the state of Ohio, and it's a restricted, not an unrestricted grant. So the money that we are receiving from the state can only be spent on like six different things, and these are part of the year. Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Hayton?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero?
Okay, one last item that I don't have on this. We just received word today that we received innovative strategies for improvement in college and career readiness for students with disabilities grant. And it's a two-year grant, and we received $50,000 for the first year, $75,000 for the second year. And once again, this grant was applied for by our staff, Melissa Wagner, Cindy Akers helped to write this, Karen Blackburn, Jim Belada. We all worked together to make sure that this got in and got posted and included the type of information that's needed. This, it's got some pretty really neat things that are going to be attached to it. There's four components to it, a family support meeting, a component, a parent center, a business partnership, and some inclusive extracurricular activities. So we'll be creating a parent center over at Ritter Library that will be connected to our parents. We'll be holding some extra parent workshops for students that have disabilities. We'll be creating some more business partnerships. And one of the really cool things that I've talked to Karen about today that I think is going to be pretty amazing is that they're creating a new type of extracurricular activity that really follows OHS AA rules. And this is just going to be like a, like our basketball team. They'll form a basketball team that has to have at least three students with disabilities, but has to have, and this is just a field, a team of five, for example. This is not the only ratio that you would have. And you'd have three students with disabilities and two regular students without disabilities that would play on a team that compete throughout the state for a state championship. And they actually then compete outside of the state. And it's not just for basketball, it's for flag football, for soccer. It can be for drama. For example, we can hire a student that has had disabilities but can be a coach themselves, that wants to coach kids in drama. And have, for example, Mrs. Brown at the middle school has done the drama in the past. She could be the co-coach with a student that has disabilities that would be a coach along with her, coaching the drama department at the middle school, something to that effect. So there's lots of different options with this grant that they've got. And we were, this was a competitive process, and we were selected for it based on the ideas that we had going into this. And I think that, not I think, I know that this is going to be a great enhancement to our district and part of the whole package of what we're doing for kids. And it's an inclusive model. It's not like, we all have heard of the Special Olympics. This is really now a new phase of Special Olympics, that goes beyond Special Olympics. It's making teams to be inclusive and not just say, those are the special, the special needs people. These are people working together with everybody, and it can be done.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So that's all I have on my report. That's all I have.
Empty the treasures. Recommend a resolution to approve a financial report for October 31st, 2019, that's attachment C. So taking a look here, we're going to look at the revenue first. Through the month of October, the district received 10.5 million in general fund revenue compared to 10.3 fiscal year 19, 10.5 18, and 10.5 again in 17. So again, we're right on pace revenue-wise with where we've been in years past. Moving on to the food service funds, through the month of October, we've received 113,779 compared to 158,000 in fiscal year 19, 192,000 in fiscal year 18, and 158,000 in fiscal year 17. And the reason for that is, is we did not receive reimbursement from school nutrition program in July or August, because we did not sell any lunches. Historically, we received June payments during the month of July, and the school started also prior to Labor Day, so we didn't have anything. It just, it's basically just a change in our schedule here. And so our food service revenue should be on pace with last year's collections, once we have time to catch up here. When we look at all funds by revenue, through the month of October, we received 13.9 million in all funds compared to 10.6 in fiscal year 19, 11.4 in fiscal year 18, and 11.3 in fiscal year 17. And the reason for this revenue in fiscal year 20, the reason it appears to be so much higher than other years is because of a transfer of nearly $2 million. Earlier on in the year, I ended up transferring approximately 1.9 some odd, 1.99 million from the '16 fund and just moving it over to the '01 fund. Basically, we used to have two checkbooks, and I just created one checkbook. And so when you do that, it shows up as a transfer, which inflates your revenue a little bit, and it'll also show as a decrease on the expenditure side when we get to it. So right now, we're overinflated by $2 million, and we'll be overinflated on the expenditure side as well. But, you know, you subtract $2 million from there, we're really right there at 11.9, which is right in line with what we've been in years past as well. Taking a look at expenditures through the month of October, we've expended 8.3 million in the general fund compared to 7.3 million last year, 7.6 million the year before, and 7.7 in fiscal year 17. The district currently on pace to spend a little bit more than it did in the previous three fiscal years. And this can be attributed to higher negotiated salary costs, increases to health and dental insurance, and also hiring additional intervention specialists. Looking at expenditures on the food service portion, through the month of October, we've expended $247,000 in the food service funds compared to 151,000 in fiscal year 19, 241,000 in fiscal year 18, and 202,000 in 17. And the reason we have, again, higher expenditures here, we've coded additional salaries toward food service, purchase services. And we've also purchased additional capital for the cafeterias. So we're dipping into that savings account that we had. And again, that was the plan all along, was to bring our overall food service expenditure fund down to a more manageable level here.
Eighteen, that was, we had, we had equipment there, probably?
In 241? Yeah, I would assume so. A lot of this stuff, I mean, a lot of this is just tiny when we had these things. The major things that we've done this year, though, we're making a concerned effort to not have that much cash in food service, if we can have the ability to offset it with expenditures from the general fund. And so things that we would typically in the past maybe buy out of the general fund, we're bonding the food service money.
Yeah, the ovens, we purchased ovens and a dishwasher. We're just replacing the dishwasher at the high school, which is pretty hefty.
Which is way more expensive than I thought it was, yeah. Yeah, so moving on to all funds by expenditure, through the month of October, we've expended 13.9 million from all funds compared to 10.6 million last year, 11.8 in fiscal year 18, and 11.1 in fiscal year 17. And again, as I said before, on the revenue side, you're seeing this increase in expenditures because of $2 million. And then lastly, we're going to look at cash. This'll make more sense and be more accurate with numbers, whether we see inflated $2 million in fiscal year. This'll, the true test right here. Through October, the district has a total of 18.3 million in cash compared to 17.6 last year, 16.8 in fiscal year 18, and 16.7 in fiscal year 17. With food service through October, we have a total of 243,975 in cash in food service compared to 306,626 last year, 218,997 in fiscal year 18, and 175,602 in fiscal year 17. And then when we take a look at all of our cash combined, through the month of October, we have a total of 21.9 billion in cash in all funds compared to 21.0 million in fiscal year 19, 20.3 million in fiscal year 18, and 20.2 million in fiscal year 17. And then lastly, we're going to take a look at the investment side of things. Through the month of October, we've earned a total of 128,487.55 on interest compared to 110,404.65 this time last year. This is a difference of 18,082.90, or 14.07 percent more in revenue on investments. Any questions? Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hayton?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero? Number two, recommend a resolution to accept the following donations: $6,092 from VABC to the softball program, $1,635.10 from VNN to athletics, and $5,000 from Ron Lashinsky and Denise Ross to athletics.
What's VNN?
That's our Vermillion...
It's like Vermillion?
Vermigation?
Yeah, it's the mental app. And it's part of that app.
Yeah, it's an app. I love like Vermillion News Network or something like that.
Yeah. But it, but it's, I think it's just related to the athletics.
Yeah, it is. It's a, it's an app that they do a lot of the scores and stuff in, and I think it's the money you make back through the, through advertising or whatever.
Oh, okay.
I think it's the company that hosts Vermillion Athletics. It's that whole, the whole, the website, Vermillion Athletics, it's that hosting company. So they must sell ads or something, and then...
Justin, for the really generous $5,000 donation from Ron Lashinsky, can we fix that for the record, though? It's L-E-S, not L-A-S.
Yes, we can.
Can I buy any? Nice, weird.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Hayton?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero? Number three, recommend a resolution to approve the payment from the Basketball Donation Fundraiser Fund to the following for helping with boys' and girls' basketball. To Cody Rice for $400 for keeping stats for the boys' basketball program, and also $300 for filming all the way girls' basketball games. To Brett Colahan, $300 for filming all the way games for boys' basketball games. To Cameron Coon, $500 for helping with the boys' basketball program. To Jerry Western, $1,000 for keeping statistics handling, or handing the scorebook and also coordinating the youth program for the girls' basketball program. Any questions? Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hayton?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero? And then I'd also like to add something here to recommend a resolution to approve the member appropriations, which I can pass down here. So what these are, I had sent this over to one of the Friday packets, we said language here, just explaining a little bit more. But ultimately, what Phil was talking about earlier, that Student Wellness and Success Fund, that's the 467 fund that you see below for 241,460 on your change from September. We had to basically add that to the appropriations so we could spend money out of that fund. Everything from the general fund all the way down until the 300 district managed activity, there's no change from the September appropriations. And then we did change, I made the recommendation to change the auxiliary services. We're going to get a little bit more money in that fund for the seniors. We just recovered, gone over the 467 fund, the student wellness, which is an issue of House 166. And then just recently, I received our budgets for our federal programs, which are all the 500 funds. And so alls I did was take my estimate, my low estimate from July, and then put into new budgets. So you're seeing the change from September, for example, from IPEA, from $100,000... the change from September, for example, from I P E A, from a hundred thousand dollars, and then adding three hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, for a total of four hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-nine. And again, these are all reimbursements that we'll be receiving from the federal government. And on the last page, again, this is just us. I just summed everything up for you to show that if the certificate of estimated resources, which is our available cash, exceeds our appropriation amount and the difference that we're leaving behind there. So again, really, the only change from September is just to tidy things up and a little bit of housekeeping items there.
I'll move.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stapp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Anything else, Justin?
That was it?
All right, thank you. Next item, item nine, items for discussion.
Oh, wait. That was not it. I would also like to do a forecast, yeah.
We were all going to roll past it, too.
Yeah, I didn't call a special meeting, but that, can we also add number five? Recommend a resolution to approve the five, November twenty nineteen, five-year forecast.
I'll move.
All right, we'll both stand over here. So the purpose of the five-year forecast, again, it's to engage the Board of Education and the community in long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing the school district. And for example, you know, this is where we discuss, or to make everybody aware of the renewal levy coming up. We also want this to serve as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continued operations. And when we look at this stuff, this will be the, this will be the fund balance at the bottom of the forecast when we get to it. And then this also is to provide a method for the Department of Education and the Auditor of State to identify school districts with potential financial problems. The way that they use this five-year forecast is they will take a look at it and identify any negative fund balances within the first two years, more importantly, but they're also looking long-term at the five-year. So to break the five-year forecast down, it's easier to take a look at it at the two sides of revenue. We have local revenue, and then we have state revenue. On the local revenue side, that's your property taxes. Local property taxes account for seventy point nine percent of the district's revenue. Property values are just above where they were in two thousand and eight before the market crash. Property tax collection rates were seven percent higher than the average in twenty nineteen, and three point nine percent higher on delinquent accounts. So we're seeing an uptick in the amount of revenue that we're getting from local taxes, really just because we're collecting a lot more delinquents, and we're paying people to pay a lot more on time as well. And then lastly here, property tax revenue has increased by one point eight percent the last five years, and believe it or not, it's actually decreased one point three percent the last ten years. Here's a quick look at our historical property values. You know, when we were talking about before the market crashed in two thousand and eight, there you are just below four hundred and sixty million dollars. And then fast forward to twenty twelve, we bottomed out down there, just, just below four hundred and twenty thousand. And since twenty fourteen, we've slowly been inching our way back up. Looking at some of the trends and the projections, I anticipate that to continue on this trajectory right now. And we should be, actually just now in nineteen, we've, we've now surpassed where we were in two thousand and eight, which is a good thing. And this is kind of indicative of that chart. If you take a look at it, here's the historical property tax collections. Back in two thousand and eleven, we collected eighteen point four million dollars. And then fast forward to two thousand and fourteen, sixteen thousand three hundred, or sixteen, sixteen point three million. That's almost a, it's a little over two million dollar drop, and that, that effect is really just from delinquent property taxes. You can see in the upcoming years, twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we're starting to get back up to where our average is, right around that seventeen point three million. Now we take a look at state funds. So state funds, they show up two different ways. They show up in restricted, which is what Phil was speaking of, and then they also show up as unrestricted, where we can spend that money on anything that we need. Restricted grants, cashed-off, a cost reimbursement, economic disadvantage, career tech funding, and also newly included is the, but it's not in the five-year forecast, but newly included student wellness and success funds. On the unrestricted side, these are funds received through the state foundation program with no distractions. Districts receive nineteen point six percent of its revenue from its source and is currently on the guarantee foundation funding formula. So the state share index is used to determine a district's capacity to raise local revenue when determining state funds. The basis for this calculation is the district's three-year average property value, median income tax, and wealth index. In fiscal year nineteen, Vermillion received twenty-six point nine percent of the opportunity grant, which equates to sixteen hundred and twenty-four dollars per student. And just for comparison's sake, in fiscal year seventeen, the state share index is twenty-eight point seven, which equated to seventeen twenty. So what's that saying? When we're seeing our property tax, our property valuation increase, our property value's increasing, which is reducing our valuation per pupil, which is increasing our valuation per pupil. And because of that, the state's saying, well, Vermillion, you're a little bit more wealthy, so we're going to give you a little bit less cash, and we're going to rely on your homeless population to subsidize you. Now again, because we're on a, on the guarantee, even though our state share index has decreased, we'll still collect roughly the same amount of revenue that we always have. One of the things that makes this forecast a little bit tricky, though, is that this is going to cover two biennials from governors. They could rewrite the language and take that out. It's hard to say. Right now, we collect about one point four million on that guarantee. So if that were to be changed or to be rewritten, we would lose one point four million dollars from the state. I don't think that's going to happen, but you never This is just an interesting thing to go over. In there, I put our fiscal year, the amount of students that we have enrolled, our state revenue, and the dollar change and the percent change. And this is including all of our state aid. So in twenty fourteen, we had nineteen hundred and five students, and we collected four point six million dollars. Next year, twenty fifteen, we, we had a little less students, but we collected five million dollars. Next year went through, twenty sixteen, we lost students again, now to eighteen forty-four, and we dropped in revenue, four point eight. Since then, it's been pretty, pretty consistent at four point eight, four point six, four point seven. Things have bottomed out a little bit. Things down in Columbus have stabilized a little bit. We're not changing the formula as much as we were in those years past, and you're able to see that in the reflection of the four point eight, roughly, million dollars. From twenty twenty on, I've projected our enrollment continuing that slight decline that we've had. And then I've also projected the state revenue, again, because we're on the guarantee, and because we saw a large uptick in House Bill one sixty-six. That's our total state revenue. So going forward, the reason you're seeing that extra two hundred thousand dollars in there is because, like Phil said, we, we gained two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And then it's actually going to go up to three hundred and thirty thousand in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And then we kind of bottom out from there, because that far out, it's incredibly difficult to forecast what's, what the legislation is going to do if they have one time. Taking a look at all other operating revenues. This is a revenue, it accounts for nine point one percent of the district's revenue. It includes things like tuition, transportation, interest on investments, sale of assets, paying them through taxes, and Medicaid reimbursements, tuition from other school districts whose students attend our schools, as well as from open enrollment. This line is estimated decrease by approximately fifteen percent over the course of the forecasted period. And the reason I'm forecasting that decrease is basically due to space. This year, we weren't able to accept as many open enrollment students as we had in the years past, and the main reason for that was just space. And so that decrease in student population also decreased our, the amount of money we received from the state. Here again is our historical and our forecasted revenue for total revenue. As you can see, in twenty nineteen, we were twenty-four point three million dollars. We've had some pretty good collection rates this year with our taxes, so that's an optimistic number there, that twenty-four point five million that we'll be collecting this year. And then from there, because we've collected over a hundred percent, we brought it back down to our average collection rate. So when you pay taxes, the school district, we typically collect ninety-six point five percent of the revenue. In twenty twenty and in the fiscal year twenty nineteen, we actually collected over a hundred percent. And so in order for us to, I wouldn't want to project, as always, we're over a hundred percent in our taxes, as much as I'd like Moving on to the expenditure side, the major thing, the first thing that we always take a look at is the personnel services. This is our largest expenditure. This accounts for forty-nine point one percent of total expenditures. And this consists of employee salaries and wages. It also includes any extended time, any severance pay, any supplemental contracts, and any overtime. Personal services have remained fairly flat despite historical negotiated salary increases. However, this time around, and again, those, those flat salaries were due to attrition. However, we're anticipating to increase since the last round of negotiations, and I put that on here as well. You can see, we, we kind of ebb and flow as far as our historical and our forecasted personnel services go. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, that was our larger for our negotiated contracts, and then from there, they should stay fairly flat. They're not going to increase at a, at a five percent rate since we have negotiated agreements in place for three years. But again, this does count for the increase in the board paid pension side. This does show also step increases as well. Our next largest item here is employee benefits. So again, this is going to be retirement. This is going to be insurance benefits. This accounts for nineteen point four percent of the budget, and it's forecasted to increase over the next five years. This consists of retirement for all employees. This, this includes workers' compensation, early retirement incentives, Medicare, unemployment costs, and also everything health-related. So this year, we actually received a five percent increase in our medical insurance premiums. And in health insurance premiums forecasted throughout the next five years, I've included a five percent increase. I am trying to, trying to predict what our health insurance costs are going to be, or how much they're going to rise in the next two, three, four, or five years. It's pretty difficult to do. Industry standard says anywhere between five and six percent, so that's where I kept it at. One interesting thing, though, we did receive a premium holiday this year, this fiscal year. And as, we've also received discounts on our workers' compensation. Because we're a drug-free campus, we receive a discount for going green, and another discount for going five years or more without a lip paint. It's less than one percent, but yeah, everything counts then.
What does it mean to go green?
Uh, I go. I go paperless.
Okay. Do you have to like show some kind of a?
So it's all done through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. Instead of getting a bill all the time, I just click the button, say go green, say something.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. And believe it or not, our, our benefits have stayed fairly flat. And again, it's, it's based on, single plans are less expensive than family plans, and vice versa there. But as you can see, starting in twenty twenty, we started with the baseline, and I increased it five percent each year, just to be on the conservative side there. Our next largest line item is purchase services. These account for eighteen point six percent of our expenditures. This is stuff like tuition paid to external providers. This is our utilities. This is services for operation, tuition expenses for scholarships, community schools, open enrollment out. And I put the numbers up there just so you can see what they are. But the district pays out six hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars in fiscal year nineteen for open enrollment out. We also pay a hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars in communities. We also pay sixty-seven thousand one hundred dollars in scholarship transfers. And we also pay three hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars to the E S C. So when you add all this stuff up, this totals one point two million dollars in students' funding transferred out. That's a big portion of our purchase services there. And again, purchase services also ebb and flow. Sometimes we provide services in-house. Sometimes we seek the E S C out to get those services. It just depends on the number of students that we have for certain programs. And then I put a three percent increase on our purchase services starting in twenty twenty, again, just, just for, typically what we're doing is we're hiring employees to, to cover things, or to have our utilities and those things, you know, on average are going to go up around three percent. So one of the main things that we always want to look at in our forecast is line six point zero one zero. Again, this shows our revenue over our expenditures. This is able to get a good sense of the school district's fiscal health. If you're always spending more money than you're bringing in, that line right there will tell you, and you know that you're going to have to make some changes. So a positive number indicates that a school district spent within its revenue for that fiscal year, and a negative number indicates that the district's expenditures exceeded the revenue generated for that fiscal year, resulting in a reduction, any surplus the district holds. So the red line is our expenditures, and the blue line is our revenue. Right now, we're right here. Last year, we did pretty well. But over here, that was, I believe, when we, we had a big move from the old building over here. We had a bunch of purchase services and movie expenses that we had to capture. As you can see, when we did that, we spent significantly more money than we brought in. Looking at the future, again, our, our revenue, it's driven by two things. It's driven by taxes, and it's driven by the number of students that we have. We, in the next five-year forecast here, we're just planning out a renewal levy, and we don't plan on bringing in a bunch more students to make an offset on our revenue. So our revenue is going to be flat. But as you've seen, you know, we have five percent increases on health insurance. We have step schedules to go through the salaries. We have increases to purchase services. So over time, our expenditures are going to keep increasing. That's where it's Phil and I's job to take a look at this stuff and see what we can do to make sure that what you're seeing in twenty twenty-four doesn't happen. And then here's our forecasted snapshot. Last year, actual revenue, twenty-four point three million. Actual expenditures, twenty-two point nine million. Results of operation, one point three million dollars to the positive. This year, twenty-four point five million is our estimated, our forecasted revenue. Twenty-four point three million is our forecasted expenditures. Results of operation, positive two hundred thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-one, again, it starts getting a little more challenging to, to pin that down, but it looks like it's going to be, assuming we kept everything as, as we did today, we would more than likely be overspending in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, and so on. One of the main things to look at is our beginning cash balance at sixteen point zero one eight nine oh seven. If we were to continue this path, and we didn't renew our levy, in twenty twenty-four, we'd be down to just under a million dollars. With our fund balance, I included our renewal levy. We started off at fifteen point seven million in twenty twenty, and by the end of the forecasted period, we're eleven point three million. So we dropped a little over, a little over four million dollars. So final comments here. Overall, today, the district is still in good financial health. However, a couple of things to keep an eye on. The district's going to need to watch its spending carefully so it can mirror revenues. We don't want to have higher expenditures than we have revenues for as long as we possibly can. And also, as costs continue to rise, the district will need to find additional ways to reduce expenditures, increase its revenue, or do a combination of both. That's it. Any questions?
Sure you're done now?
Pretty sure.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine, items for discussion.
We can vote on that now? Am I sorry, any questions?
No, no, I forgot.
All right. Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0?
No, items for discussion are in the term. Anything? All right. Moving on. Item 10, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or student unless the employer or official or student requests a public hearing.
A second. Does that go as for then?
Yeah.
For executive sessions?
Yeah.
Okay. For each thing we discussed.
Right, right, right.
And you second it?
Yeah.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0? Time is?
Eight, 12.
I'm sorry.
Do our time back eight, 12?
One of the lucky ones.
Item 10, consent agenda. Superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda. Means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the October 14th, 2019, regular meeting, attachment D. Two, adopt provisions to the following district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Neola, the first brief as listed, attachment E. Three, adopt a resolution to approve open enrollment agreement for excess costs for children with disabilities. The Huron City School District, seven students. And Edison Local School District, two students, attachment F. Four, approve the agreement for health center between the Vermillion Local Schools and Erie County Health Department, Erie County Community Health Center, attachment G. Five, approve the following employment action. Letter of resignation from Denise Zilski, administrative assistant to operations, effective October 25th, 2019. Gabriel Caudill, teacher, effective October 2nd, 2019. Six, one-year classified contract for the 2019-20 contract year to Cindy Akers, general administrative assistant, food service, eight hours, $17.71 per hour. Vanessa Carter, food service worker, level one, $11.05 per hour. Seven, one-year additional duties contract for the 2019-20 contract year as listed. Eight, one-year supplemental contract for the 2019-20 contract year to, as listed. Nine, one-year non-union contract for the 2019-20 contract year to Kelly Gross. Hope seat transfer from food service and bus monitor to central office, special projects liaison, the superintendent and treasurer, year one, step one, $26,005 for 169 days. And 10, one-year contract extension for the 2020-2021 contract year to Phil Peppin, superintendent. Any items that need to be removed?
No.
Nope.
I'll move. Or did we already move?
No, just anything removed, but nothing removed. Okay, so Chris moved?
That's second.
Any questions or discussion, anything? All right, we'll call it, please.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0?
Item, public participation? John?
I do have a question. I'll do public participation. For Caudill, who resigned, how did they, what, what happened to like his class load? Is that being covered with a sub or did we distribute it?
He was lucky enough to find a sub that had experience doing similar work in another district. He was actually subbing for us and so we hired him in that position.
I think he's a hired employee now. Not just, he's a hired teacher at the last board meeting, not just the sub.
All right, so I wasn't there last meeting. So he's doing the 3D printing?
He was subbing for us in, in, in our district, but then we hired him as a full-time.
And he does all the technology stuff that?
Yes.
It's what he was doing at, I think, Zanesville. And then he got married and moved up here and good fit.
Wow, good.
Nice.
We're lucky.
Yes? All right, item 12 to 14. Date and location of upcoming board meetings. Regular meeting Monday, December 9th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. Regular meeting Monday, January 13th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. And regular meeting Monday, February 10th, 2020.
There should be an organizational meeting on January.
Yeah. Was it 6:45?
Actually, I think it also needs to be before January 10th.
The organization meeting?
For.
The organizational meeting, yeah. So if we?
So shall we do the meeting on the 7th? Or the 6th, I mean?
What's the reason you made for that question?
Power of the House.
Is that not fair?
Yeah, so as long as we did it on the week of the 6th, any time, it does not make sense. It's an eight-time, six, seven, eight.
But if we pulled the actual board meeting up to the 6th, then we could do it all that same day, right?
Do that? Okay, so.
The December 9th one, I, I'm coming back from Florida that day. I thought I'd be able to get my flight price says, but I'm not coming in until 7:30 that evening. So, yeah, it was like a couple hundred dollar difference between when I thought I could get a bit earlier flight coming in and just wasn't fully going to happen. I don't even know when I should have come in at 7:30, so I don't think I'm going to make that meeting. Yeah, yeah. I can talk on the way home from the airport. Yeah. Okay.
All right. We want to just keep it to the 9th, is that very good?
Yeah.
So, all right, so then January 6th? 6:45 is the organizational meeting?
And I think, again, with all power of the House, I'll have to have a public hearing for my tax budget before then. So I'll post that separately. It's the most exciting tax bracket.
So, wait, we can repeat that, so?
So before the organizational meeting, I'll do a, I'll do a separate meeting for the board just for, I just have to be there and have a tax budget.
So just your own little meeting?
For the community, yes. I really have to do that.
Okay.
Same, same to the 6th?
I can do it for you as long as it's $4,000, doing that same thing.
I'll come in and eat my dinner and sit.
I'll come and sit with you.
I need to ask questions about the tax budget. All over it.
Tax as much as possible.
We're good. Tell us good time.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
So whatever Roman numeral is next, we are at another executive session. Reason number one. The appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or student unless the employer or official or student requests a public hearing.
8:48?
You're a role, please.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.